All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of August 18, 2014 to order. If we could, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Inaudible)
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers, Spohman?
Yeah.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Here. And at this time, we will have an approval of the agenda, if we could have a motion.
Is there anything that needs to be added?
I don't believe so.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. And at this time, we have the consent agenda. We do have... Oh, I'm sorry. Here I am rolling right through this. At this time, we will open the floor for public comments. We do ask for this first public comment, that you limit your items to things that are on the agenda this evening. And when you come forward, if you would, please provide your name and your address, for Sandy is very helpful. And we also ask that you limit it to three minutes.
Hi there, Gordy Maxwell from North Boulevard in Cadillac. I noticed under City Manager's report, we'll be talking in Item D bids for the acquiring of property and for the appraisal service. And I noticed in Saturday's paper, the article referred to you receiving appraisals for four different properties for the well field. And I would ask you to go into discussion about those four properties, identifying which properties they are and how you happen to pick those four properties, when it comes to that point. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else, then we'll go ahead and close the first public comment. And at this time, we'll need to approve the consent agenda. We do have the minutes from the regular meeting on the 21st, along with a work session on the 22nd. And then we do have some closed minutes here that we haven't seen yet, for the closed session that was held on July 21st.
I did have a question on the open minutes. And I actually did get a call. I don't know if these minutes are available to the public or how they knew, but they wondered about the discussion on the building inspection services. And then it made me look that we're no longer putting the names of the people that spoke. Mr. Petcha just wondered if that was a change. We've always done that in the past, but are we going to where we're not putting the actual names or a listing off who's the public comment?
There's been no change, Councilmember Stevens. I do not believe there's any requirement that we list the actual names of those that speak publicly. I know that we do try to capture them if we can, but I don't believe there's any requirement that we list them on a frequent basis, I guess. So if there aren't names in there, I don't think there's any attempt to hide who is speaking publicly. Perhaps we didn't catch it, or it was just an attempt to summarize the spirit of the conversation.
Marcus, I think that Sandy had something she wanted to add.
You'll notice later on, I did put like the first initial of the last name. None of them, nobody signed in, Councilmember Stevens. So it was difficult for me to know exactly the spelling of the names and everything.
Okay, I just wanted to see if we were switching direction of that way for future reference.
That's why we asked for the, so I can get the correct spelling of the names.
I'm sorry, I'll try to do a better job of making sure that we're annoying people too.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Now, at this time, we have a proclamation for the 60th anniversary of the Cadillac J.C.'s. Is there a representative here this evening? Do you want to come up?
(Inaudible)
Oh, you can bring them all up. You can come on right up here, so people can see you. How are you?
Good.
It's good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Hi, kids. Okay, if you want to turn around so people at home can see you also, I am going to read the proclamation honoring the Cadillac J.C.'s. Whereas, the Cadillac J.C.'s have played a vital role in the development of young leaders ages 21 to 40 in our community since 1954. And whereas, 2014 marks the 60th anniversary of the J.C.'s presence in the Cadillac community. And whereas, the Cadillac J.C.'s work diligently to help build strong leaders that provide outstanding service and contribute to the entire community. And whereas, throughout the years, the Cadillac J.C.'s have contributed to the betterment of the Cadillac community through various community projects. And whereas, this involvement includes such projects as Lakefront Days, the Kenwood Park Playscape, Veterans Memorial Stadium Expansion in the Press Box, Relay for Life, Habitat for Humanity, March of Dimes, the Clam River Greenway, the Shea Restoration in the City Park, the City Fountain Project, the Cadillac Backpack Program, Cadillac High School Tennis Courts, the Community Easter Egg Hunt, Coats for Kids, and many more. And whereas, the Cadillac J.C.'s are still leading projects within the Cadillac community and continue to strive to build strong leaders for the years to come. Therefore, it be resolved that I, Carla J. Filkins, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, hereby recognize and honor the Cadillac J.C.'s for their 60th anniversary of leadership, generosity, and community impact, presented this 18th day of August 2014.[536.88][536.88](Applause)
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And the next thing that we have on our agenda is a community spotlight. Marcus, would you like to introduce this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we are having a community spotlight with respect to the Cadillac Dog Park Committee. There are representatives here this evening, including Mike Coy and our Community Development Department, who's been our staff liaison to this group and has been doing quite a great job. Mike, I think you're sitting right over there?
Yes.
On trying to keep this item moving forward. The group is going to provide some additional information to council this evening, as well as requests to be formally recognized by the City Council as well. Mike or Mr. Allen, if you wish to come forward?
Before I get started, the J.C.'s left, but I'd add one more to that. They helped with the haunted forest that we ran for several years. It helped some awareness and some funding for that project up there at the Diggins Hill Tennis Courts. So that is a very active group, so I want to make sure I thank them. And I'll thank you as well for entertaining our group here tonight. Big thanks go out to Mike and Jerry and the staff. They've been very helpful. Al Dumand, they've been at almost all of our meetings. A special thanks, though, goes out to Mike and Lori Wetherall. They were the first ones there in December that kind of took my challenge and came to the House. And so Mike has been there right from the start, as well as other committee members who have come and gone. And we've maintained a good, strong dozen, maybe 20, members that have been working on this project. I think what I'd like to spend as much of my time tonight talking about, you have a packet, I think, in front of you. I hope that you reviewed that. The request is quite basic, and you folks have kind of followed us, I think, a little bit. We were here several months ago, and you graciously let us kind of continue and move forward. So I'm hoping you're a little bit familiar. I'd like to spend a little time talking about the need for the dog park first, because I think that's where you have to begin. And like a James Michener novel, I have to begin in the Neolithic Age. We have to kind of go back to do that. If you know James Michener, all his books were thick. They all started way back when, and they all were good history. The reason why I would do that is because dogs have played a really important role in our history. I don't know if people really realize that or not. When we were kind of emerging from caves and ourselves very clanish and very pack-oriented, we were, it was a tough, tough time. Fire came along, and that was important. We began to relax and look at the stars finely and start to figure out where we were in this world. But there was a problem. It was called a saber-toothed tiger. And the saber-toothed tiger was going to, anthropologists wonder, literally hunt us to extinction. But when dogs and humans got together, that changed everything. We now had something to protect us from that terrible beast that was going to maybe end our existence. There's some question about whether we brought dogs to our camp or dogs came into our camp on their own. I like to thank the former. And that's why I think dogs and humans are so hardwired together. We share a bond that no other animal shares. And we can see that daily in how dogs react to our facial features and other kinds of things. I think because we are, to a large degree, pack-oriented, and so are dogs, I think dogs can teach us a lot. I think we can learn a lot from our dogs. And I think it's just beginning to, we're just beginning to understand that. And I think one of the biggest things we can learn is some more natural things that maybe we've kind of forgotten as humans. Maybe we've gone a little beyond nature. We've kind of felt that nature is our servant, not we're the servants of nature. Dogs don't understand that. Dogs live in a natural world. And I think that in doing so, we may get a chance to reap that kind of knowledge, especially in terms of several things. Dogs, like humans, need exercise. That's an important, an important part of their daily life. It has to be. I think it has to be a part of our daily lives as well. Discipline is an important part of the pack and keeping everybody moving forward on the same page at all times. I think humans need that too. And when we don't, we seem to go in directions that aren't always good for us. And then last comes that affection component. Dogs like us, we need affection, but we need it last, not first. And I think that's an important lesson for us. The other thing that dogs can teach us in nature is that balance will always win out. Balance is important. Balance will always occur, whether we like it or not, and whether it's environmentally or socially or even personally. Things, as they say, have a way of working out the way they do. That's the life of dogs, too. And when they're not in balance, they have problems. And my hope is that designing the dog park in such a way and operating it such a way and providing opportunity for dog owners and dogs to spend time together in a much more natural setting will help us move not only our dogs more to a balanced place, but I really believe it will transfer into our understandings of children and our society as a whole. So although this is a park for dogs, I would like the council to consider it much more than that, and has the potential to be much more than that. The packet that's in front of you outlines, I think, very well what we've been able to accomplish so far. I would want to thank Margot Copley for spending a lot of time to put that together. It has our request. It seems very simple, to first acknowledge us as an official committee, which will allow us to raise funds, much like you did with Skate Park Committee and with the Diggins Hill Committee. It's incredibly beneficial to allow us to garner money. To grant us the parcel of land that is about the northern third of what has been called the Waterworks Field as a place to do that, and to continue your support by allowing us to use your city staff, which, over the years, I've sure enjoyed keeping those guys busy and gals. And they've come, they've stepped up to the plate every time. It's just amazing. So that's it. I think that's all I'd like to say. I'd sure like to answer any questions you have before you move on.
I actually did, concerning the official committee, do you already have the structure you have in place of the members, or you're just looking at basically the, it looks like there's 20 or more volunteers that you just want it to be approved as a formal?
Well, we have a committee that has regular members. We take attendance. We'll record minutes. We have an officer and me, I guess, if that's, you know, we have that. So we have structure. I think we could plug in, much like the Diggins Hill Group did, very similar kind of a structure to it. Ad hoc, once it's up and going and we've raised the money and built it, the committee, I would imagine, move on, just like other committees have. And you'll notice that in the packet, I'm hoping another group, we can get another group going that will help with the, maybe not the ongoing operation, but at least an ongoing support for the park. And one of the things that you see in other dog parks that's successful is another group that steps up after that initial group that helps gets it built. So yeah, Councilman Stevens, we do have some structure to our group.
But you actually need us just to soon formalize that?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a way that you could get a, your perceived membership and the committee structure you'd want to present to us?
If that's important, sure. We could get that to Jerry, and he could get it to Marcus, or however that, whatever that chain is. Sure, that would be not a problem.
I just, I wanted to compliment the work that was done here. You know, one of the, one of the greatest concerns that we have in this community is some blight that's going on. And, you know, without knowing it, maybe, you know, you guys picked up a big area out here and you're going to make it something beautiful. You know, when there's nothing there, it just is. And by taking the time to use, you know, to look at that space, it's going to make a huge difference out there in, you know, close to the industrial park. And, you know, all the manufacturers are concerned about the blight out in that area. It's just open fields where garbage collects, so this will, this will be beautiful.
Thank you. We've met with some of the local industries in that area, some of our neighbors, and they're very enthused. And I think they're probably enthused to help, too, without being too, I don't want to put them on the spot, but that's been the kind of informal feeling. There is a large piece of property, and as we move forward, we have other ideas for some of that, rest of that, for sure. One of the things that that, the 9.7 acres that you see there on your map is the, is the park itself, but that leaves, oh, not quite 20, but close to it, almost a half-mile walking track around that area. And one of the things we're going to encourage, as long as the city has no other use for that area as well, is people to walk their dogs there. Dog parks do not take the place of exercise, and we don't want to profess that. Exercise is sustained walking for a period of time. That's what it is to a dog. This is an opportunity to work on discipline and also to play. And dogs need that packment, they need to get in packs so they can get back to their natural feelings. And so this, I think, will afford us that, for dogs, that opportunity.
I know that you've looked at several different sites throughout town. It's kind of funny, actually, I think. Started up at Diggin' Hill, and then it went over here along the lakefront, and then it went to Leeson, Cassaway's, and all of a sudden, then it was there. And so I have no idea what all that discussion was, and it doesn't really matter.
I can summarize it if that's a question.
No, you know what my question really is, is what was the discussion related to this location in terms of, it seems like now everybody has to drive?
Yeah. I would say my response would be one word, size. When everything, when you cut away everything, when you look at parks that are successful in our mind and ones that weren't, it's size. That's, that's the number one consideration. The other thing is, I was kind of brutish as a chairperson. I kept reminding my group, let's make a park for dogs, not for humans. While some of the other parks fit in well with the park system, they were very accessible for humans, they might not have been as good for dogs, especially because of that size factor. And I think, too, when you find most people who come to an area or who live in an area are very comfortable driving their dogs to the park. One of the things that I might even encourage people to do is take your, take your dogs to the park, get their wiggles out, run them, let them play, just like you do your kids. When you go to the store, don't leave your kids in the car, but crack your window. Your dog can relax in there while you shop or do things. There's a dog park in Salt Lake City, amazing. It's right in, it's woven right in with the dog park. People walk their dogs, they take their dogs, they walk their dogs through the, through the farm market. Dogs are incredibly well behaved, because they've had time to socialize before, and now they're not so agitated as they go through. So we felt that although it might be somewhat more convenient for some people to walk their dogs here, the vast majority of people who use dog parks drive their dogs there. They do. Just like you drive your kids to the playground. Not very often, just anymore, you tell your kids, run across town to go to the playground. There might have been a time, but not so much now. It's a good question. We did, we talked about it, Jerry.
I think you probably did address that, but I appreciate the fact that this is a fairly large parcel, too. I certainly agree with what Carla said, you know, it's probably, it's just a vacant field now.
Yeah, and that's what dogs like, vacant fields. They like to be out in vacant fields. It doesn't bother them at all.
Dogs like dog smells. That's what they'll be doing.
Smelling is an important part. And that's the thing you have to let dogs do, is smell, smell each other, smell you. Dogs smell. That's what they do. That's how they, that's how they identify you. Yeah. Other questions?
For the restrooms, is that part of the dream?
Yeah, that, yeah. And I don't even, you know, there's so many components, that is such a rough, a rough, that is not even, may not even be entirely what it looks like. That's just a place for us to start. We didn't want to go too far into design until we got permission. And once, now that we have permission, design and then subsequent fundraising will, we don't feel that bathrooms are very advisable, generally speaking. A porta-john will work fine. Most people, dogs go to the bathroom in dog parks, not people.
So if we give you permission tonight and we recognize the committee, do you have a start date targeted?
We haven't talked much about that, no. I think it'll come together quite quickly. There's always, there's already been quite a bit of work done by other parties for dog parks in Cadillac, so in terms of what we might need, I think it's going to go quite fast. Beyond the fencing, and we'll go to Mr. Dietrich and find out about the water systems.
Are there other groups that are working on dog parks?
No, 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 no. There have been other grant proposals for dog parks before by some of our members to other funding agents, on other funding bodies. I think the Cadillac Leadership Group had a request last year. They didn't choose the project, but all that groundwork has been, a lot of it's been done. And so, and there's really not too much to this. Once we decide where the fences go and how to design those, get the water in there. Now, we do have other ideas in the future, but to get it going, I think it's going to be a very economically doable thing.
One of the reasons why I asked that question is because it does, when I looked at your material, it doesn't look like you've named this park.
Usually wait till you find out who gives you the most money to do that.
There's a brochure somewhere with the name of the park.
We have developed a rough brochure that now, once we get permission from you, we'll start to hand out. There was a dollar figure on that. We'll probably review that in light of now permission and exactly see what we might have to have. But I can almost guarantee you that the lion's share of it will be fencing. Once we get that figured out, it's pretty, and like I said, we have had some of the people in that industrial park area want to help out. I can't see this costing the city any money, other than operationally helping us with some of the maintenance issues.
I'd like to hear that.
Yeah, right. Again, much like the Diggins Hill project, I think those kind of projects are really doable from the city standpoint, because you get a lot of bang for your buck.
You're getting a good reputation, because you finished the Diggins Hill project.
Well, we've done some things.
And the tennis courts. And now this, there's going to be groups now trying to get Bill Allen on board.
Oh, we have some more ideas.
No, that's not why I'm doing it all. The, I just, the more I learn about dogs, I mean, I don't want to overstate this, I really think they're, they can teach us a lot about things we need to know right now in our society.
Okay, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Oh, and just, and last, again, what you're giving us permission to do is to become a committee so we can raise money. But in terms of the final okay for a proposal of what the dog park looks like, we have not brought that to you. And that's explained in that first paragraph. This is kind of a preliminary opportunity for us to do that. Before we ever put one shovel in the ground, there'll be a full proposal in front of you, which will outline everything, cost breakdowns and all that. That would be coming back to you. This is just a preliminary request to kind of keep moving. Okay, thank you.
Now, Marcus, this was on the agenda simply as informational this evening, is that correct?
It is, but in listening to...
Yeah, he's looking for a...
Yeah, in listening to the presentation, I can see it would be appropriate, should Councilwoman Stevens entertain a motion that would recognize the Dog Park Advisory Committee and allow them to continue with their planning of utilizing the portions of the former city well field, that that would be...
That'd be great. Yeah, I think we should do that.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Good job, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Marcus, would you like to introduce the next thing here?
Sure. We're actually getting into the public hearings. This first item, or the only public hearing on the agenda, Mayor, members of the City Council, is with respect to the consideration of approval of a resolution that will adopt Ordinance Number 2014-09 that amends Section 18-21 and 18-22 of our code with respect to fire service recovery fees. This was an item that was introduced and discussed in our last meeting. What this would allow us to do is to recover fees for responses that the fire department has, when they go out essentially and observe down utility lines until the utility companies have a chance to respond to them.
And this is the, the only thing that's needed by the utility companies, or do they need a separate, any other action by the council?
This is all that we would need, Councilmember Stevens.
Yes. Motion carries. Good job, you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Marcus, would you like to introduce the next thing here?
Sure. We're actually getting into the public hearings. This first item, or the only public hearing on the agenda, may or members of the City Council, is with respect to the consideration of approval of a resolution that will adopt Ordinance Number 2014-09 that amends Section 18-21 and 18-22 of our code with respect to fire service recovery fees. This was an item that was introduced and discussed in our last meeting. What this would allow us to do is to recover fees for responses that the fire department has when they go out essentially and observe down utility lines until the utility companies have a chance to respond to them.
And this is the only thing that's needed by the utility companies, or do they need a separate, any other action by the council?
This is all that we would need, Councilmember Stevens, with respect to amend our code. The fees that would be assessed would be actual fees.
Right.
So...
Do we have a motion to approve?
We got it.
Oh, public hearing. So we'll go ahead and open then for the public hearing. If anyone would like to provide any comment? And if not, we'll go ahead and close, public comment?
Thanks to Mr. Norman, especially for your help. This is, two things, it brings in a little more funding for the city at no cost to the city at all, and it also maybe will get faster response times if there are issues. So I think it's a double win for the city, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution to adopt Ordinance Number 2014-09 amending Sections 18-21 and Sections 18-22 of the Cadillac City Code regarding the fire service recovery fees.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda this evening is communications, and we have several of them.
Yes, we do. The first request is from Matt McGeara for the closure of the Amvets parking lot on September 1st, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for a duck race.
Are they real ducks?
Yeah, you've got a whole flock of real ducks running around in. Good evening, good evening. I'm Matt McGeara, obviously mostly you know me. I'm not speaking tonight, actually. Bruce Wilhelm here from the Amvets will be. He's the chairman of this. I'm kind of breaking in somebody new, so Bruce, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Bruce Wilhelm. I'm here in behalf of the Amvets. We would like to present Doug's Duck Derby Memorial. It's on Labor Day, September 1st, at 1:00, $5 per duck. The money will go to our Veterans Day program at the Lakeview, where we honor the veterans that are housed in there and present them with new hats and certificates, as well to our Americanism program at our local schools and building fund. Ducks will be, ducks will race from the dam on the Clam River in Chestnut Street to the bridge on Hain Street. Beard, tent, DJ, and food will be served in the parking lot of the Amvets. The prize money will be handed out to Amvets Post 110 after the race. First place is $250, second place is $150, third place is $50, last duck is $10. We're asking for our parking lot to be closed from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. on this day. Thank you.
Now, you said it's Doug's Duck Derby?
Doug's Duck Derby Memorial, ma'am.
Okay. Doug?
Doug's.
Okay.
Doug's Duck Derby.
D-O-U-G.
D-O-U-G, yes, yes, ma'am.
Who is, okay.
He was our commander. He passed away last year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that. Okay, thank you.
He started this race two years ago, and then we didn't do it last year because of his passing and whatnot.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, thank you. Okay, can we have a motion if no one has any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for the parking lot closure for the Amvets on September 1st, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for Doug's Duck Race Memorial.
Support.
Could we have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Shippers?
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. It was a pleasure to meet you, Bruce. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is a request from Jason Straight for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Pine and for the closure of the South and East City Complex parking lot on September 11th, 2014, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the Children's Safety Expo.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Pine and the closure of the South and East City Complex parking lot on September 11th, from 2:00 to 7:00 for the Children's Safety Expo.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next is a request from Bob Matthews for the closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris on October 4th, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. and from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., also on October 18th, from 11:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. for the Steam Railroading Institute.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Steam Railroading Institute from Owasso.
I was going to say, I bet you're from the railroad.
And we are...
And your name is?
My name's Bob Matthews.
Okay.
And we are running two fall color excursions this year. The first one will be on the 4th of October, and that will begin and end here in Cadillac. And then on the 18th, the train will be coming in from Mount Pleasant, and there will be a side trip out west of town at that time.
To Yuma, is that where it goes?
I don't know if they'll make it out quite that far, but it'll be an hour round trip. And all ticket information is available at michigansteamtrain.com.
I just have a quick question for me.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews, do you know yet if the steam engine will be on?
The steam engine will not be pulling the excursions this fall. There's some work being done on it, but it has been back in service.
You did see it a couple of years ago.
Yes. Part of the reason for that is the expense involved, but they will be running the North Pole Express trips again downstate.
With the...
With the steam locomotive.
And if people wanted more information, how would they reach your agency?
Just go to michigansteamtrain.com on the web, and all, there's ticket purchasing information there, as well as all of the other scheduled events going on.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote. Let me make sure I'm on the right ones. The closure of Lake Street between Cass and Harris on October 4th, from 8:30 to 10:30, and from 5:00 to 7:30, and then again on October 18th, from 11:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. for the Steam Railroading Institute events.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next request is from Jake Foster for the closure of North Street between Hemlock and Shelby on August 25th, 2014, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the Cub Scout Pack 150 Soapbox Derby.
Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor Felkins. My name is Jake Foster. I'm from Pack 150 in Cadillac, part of the Boy Scouts of America, and we would like permission to close part of North Street. Just the first section is where we'll be racing, but we want the additional streets closed for safety concerns. We'll be doing a soapbox derby, which is a gravity-powered car that the kids sit on. They will be wearing bicycle helmets as protection, and we'll have hay bales set up on the sides of the street. Any other questions?
Sounds like fun.
Is this the first time you've done this?
This is the first time we've done this.
I mean, I remember when my son was in Cub Scouts, and we had these little teeny cars and...
We still do that also.
Soapbox derby.
That's the Pine Derby.
Oh, that's right.
The kids did build these cars, though.
This is great. I love this.
The kids helped assemble them. One of our, one of our leaders, Trent, actually built the kits, and then the kids assembled them a month ago. And then we're going to put some...
Did the three boys that are with you, do they have one that they're going to race?
Well, actually, the two older boys actually helped the younger kids, because they are Weeble 2s.
Okay.
They'll be crossing over to the Boy Scouts here in the late fall here, first part of 2015. They helped assist some of the younger scouts, but Liam, one of our other scouts, and Luke, I'm not sure if he's still here, they were part of the bear den, and they built their own car. And Luke's actually part of the wolf den.
Great.
So they helped build their own cars.
Good job, guys.
Then they get to do what we did, maybe someday, and do the rafts, huh?
That's, you know, I had that discussion with my wife the other day about building the rafts, and I said, I don't remember much about it. I said, but I remember building the things and trying to hope we get all the way from canal to...
There you go.
I did have one question. Did you get the correct copy of the insurance for that day?
I was just going to say, I hope you have insurance.
No, we do, but...
We have the one that's dated...
There was one that was dated incorrectly. It was dated for Sunday.
This is 3/21/14 was when it was...
The state here is August 25th.
It should be down towards the bottom. It says policy...
Oh, I see, 24.
Okay, that's the incorrect one. I have the correct one, which is August 25th.
Could you leave a copy of the city card, please?
I can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for checking on that.
That's coming up.
Well, I just want to make sure, yeah, next Monday.
Thanks for being involved in Scouts, too. It's nice to see when Scouts turn around later and do that. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the closure of East North Street between Hemlock and Shelby on August 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. for the Cub Scout Pack 150 Soapbox Derby.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Did you want to leave that copy?
I can.
Okay, we can give that to the clerk. Thank you.
The next request is from Joy Vandre for the closure of Harris Street from Elk Alley to Lake on September 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Car Show, and the closure of the northern half of the city park. There's actually been a requested change. This would be beginning on September 25th at 4:00 p.m. through September 28th at 2:00 p.m., and for the display of a banner from September 15th to September 29th, all for the Craft Beer Festival.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I got the change of the dates. I just want to make sure that all the council members caught the change.
Yes. Instead of beginning on September 26th, she was requesting that we, they allow, we allow them to begin on September 25th.
Okay.
Gives them more time to set up the tents.
Right in the middle of the paragraph.
Beginning, yeah.
Beginning on September 25th. Okay, and then there was another change?
No, that was it.
That was it? Okay, thank you. Okay.
So we're starting on September 25th at 4:00?
The park needs to be, we need to start setting up Thursday evening versus Friday evening, because with the new fire marshal requirements, we have some things that we need to make sure that we've never had to do before, and the size of the tents and stuff, so we need more time to make sure that everything's set up accordingly.
Okay.
How are you coming with volunteers?
We have, out of the 100 volunteers that we need, I believe at this point, we have about 65 of the slots filled already. So, but if you're interested in volunteering, you have to be 21 years or older, and you can go to ccbeerfest.com, and you can, you sign up online.
You'll probably want to check my ID, but I did sign up to...
Okay. Yeah, we've had to do a lot of changes this year, because the, last year, the event exceeded 1,000 attendees. So this year, we're expecting 1,000 of 1,500. So because of that size, there's a lot more insurance requirements, there's a lot more, just a lot more of everything. So bigger tents, more beer vendors, we have a lot more food vendors. So it's very exciting, though. We've sold a lot of, a lot of tickets already, and I know even at the Visitors Bureau, my other hat, we've been advertising it a lot. Actually, we're advertising the steam trains coming into town those two weekends, and probably about five different weekends throughout the whole fall, so spending a lot of money on that. So we're hoping to bring in a lot of, a lot of people.
Well, if this grows in leaps and bounds like the Back to the Brooks did...
Yes.
You're going to be busy.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And this year, we have 16 brewers compared to eight brewers last year. But I also do want to, want to mention that we, it's not just beer. We'll have beer, craft beer, but we also have mead, cider, and wine this year. Last year, we had cider and mead, but we didn't have any wine. So we just want to let everybody out there know that it is a mixture, so if you're not a big craft beer person, but you like cider, you like wine, you can also enjoy that as well. And then we also have a new beer geek, lots of t-shirts, more food vendors, open mic for music. We do have the Pawn Shop Radio, which is a local band here in town, who's will be opening up for Mad Cat Midnight Blues. And if you, we have a link on our website, if you want to hear a trailer on that, on that band, they're awesome. It'll be, it'll be a lot of fun down in the park. And then the only, only other thing I think I want to mention is there's also a home brew competition. So it's shaping up and looking like an awesome day.
Car show, too.
Yes, and we also have the car show earlier in the day. We kind of separated that. Last year, it created a little bit of confusion, having both of them at the same time, so we, we've kind of paired the car show a little bit earlier in the day. Most of the car show owners are typically not beer drinkers, so they kind of wanted to be out of there before a lot of the, a lot of the beer started, started flowing, apparently, so. There was a request by our, our classic car owner.
Well, it spreads the day out.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. So it'll be good.
Do you need taste testers for that little competition?
We do actually have 10, 10 professional brew masters or brew people coming in. We may be able to have a special, a special taster. Sherry, I can look into it and get back with you.
I have a lot of experience drinking craft beer.
So we're very excited about this year, though. It's all, it's all coming together really well.
Good.
So.
Awesome.
Any other questions for us?
That's good.
Okay. Okay, could we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the closure of Harris Street from Elk Alley to Lake on September 27th, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the Car Show. Closure of the northern half of the city park, beginning September 25th at 4:00 p.m. through September 28th at 2:00 p.m., and the display of a banner across Mitchell Street from September 15th to September 29th, 2014, for the Craft Beer Festival.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll get you some samples.
Oh, jeez. I would at least make her work for them, Joy.
We can arrange that.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are the FOIA appeals that we are going to hear this evening, and I am going to turn it over to legal counsel to have them introduce.
Thank you very much. What we're gonna do right now is invite Mr. Louis Richardson up to discuss his appeal. Just so council knows, there was an appeal that was submitted to the City of Cadillac for a copy of the audiotape and the minutes from the July 7th special meeting, and the city's original response was to deny that request because there are no minutes of that meeting, and that meeting was canceled. And it's from that initial response from the city that Mr. Richardson's now appealing. Now, you should have a copy of his appeal letter that he submitted. He also is gonna have an opportunity to speak at this point.
Do you want to talk?
I'm Louis Richardson, and I brought back this appeal because there was a meeting. It was posted in Cadillac News, and my response that I received back from the city wasn't -- was that there was no meeting, and there was. And because I get a little bit excited over our super transparent government, I have my attorney Carrie who's gonna take over for me. Any questions refer to her.
All right. Thank you, council members, the mayor, and of course, council for the city. My name is Carrie Bruseno, and I do represent Mr. Richardson. He's asked me to basically, first off, go ahead and read his appeal so that, you know, in the interest of transparency, that everybody in this room will know what his appeal is based on, and then I have a few just very brief comments. So he wrote this letter on July 28th, 2014. That was the date of his appeal, and I understand that it's not received until this meeting. That's correct. Dear Mr. Petcha, is that correct pronunciation? FOIA representative, I hereby appeal the city's denial of my July 18th, 2014 FOIA request for a copy of the audiotape and minutes from the city council's special meeting held at 5:15 p.m. on Monday, July 7th, 2014. According to the Cadillac News, a special meeting that was requested by Mayor Philkins was held where the city council did convene at 5:15 p.m. on July 7th, 2014. At the special meeting, council presumably did the pledge of allegiance, took roll call, approved an agenda, opened and entertained public comment, and then formally voted on a motion that thankfully didn't pass, because if it would have, the council would have proceeded into yet another illegal closed session. You have two pending cases for your lack of transparency, and it looks like your actions so far are asking for a third one. The city council staff and your attorney, Mike Homer, know that this special meeting was not posted on the city's website and that the city violated the Open Meetings Act, this time ironically while you were meeting to discuss my open meetings case. This is an egregious mistake. I'm very disappointed with this FOIA denial, and I would like my appeal hearing set up for Monday, August 4th, 2014. And I'll interject there and add that, obviously, that didn't happen because the meeting was not held that day to the election, and this was part of the regularly scheduled meetings that happened back in January, right? This was planned. So today is the regularly scheduled meeting. I would like this appeal resolved immediately. It is ridiculous that you would blatantly lie and respond that the meeting was canceled. It was not canceled as a vote occurred in the meeting, according to the Cadillac News article that was in the paper that week. Unfortunately, I could not attend this special meeting as it wasn't posted online, and I wasn't aware the mayor was setting a special meeting to discuss my pending case. By the way, thank you to council members Malama and Stevens for stopping the closed session portion of the July 7th meeting by voting no on the action of going into the closed session. Also, thanks to Art Stevens for alerting the council that the meeting was illegal as it was not posted on the city's website as required by law. I also want you to know that the council has violated the Open Meetings Act again as you did not prepare minutes to this special meeting within a week and did not approve them at your July 21st regular meeting, both required by the Open Meetings Act. The city has been operating in an atmosphere of distrust since January. Please put an end to the secrecy. Thank you, Louis J. Richardson, Jr. And very briefly, to address Mr. Richardson's claims here, in the Open Meetings Act, a meeting is basically any time there are quorum is present and a decision is made. And in the definition of a decision under the Open Meetings Act, it does include voting. So if in fact, as the Cadillac News reported, that the members came here, met, and did vote on going into a closed session, then a meeting did occur, and there should be minutes, and that's what he's asking for, is for those minutes to be provided to him. Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to start off by saying, you know, you've all received a copy of Mr. Richardson's FOIA appeal. I do want to state for the record that it's my opinion that the council has not violated the Open Meetings Act, and in particular with the meeting also that was held on September or on July 7th. As Mr. Richardson knows, because it was stated in his letter, the council had a session planned for that day, and at the time during the session became aware that the meeting wasn't properly noticed. And although, you know, council for Mr. Richardson's quoted the Open Meetings Act with respect to what a meeting is and so forth, one of the prerequisites of the Open Meetings Act is that it is properly noticed. So what is a public body to do when they realize there's been a mistake made and the notice wasn't proper? Is do what the city did, which is to immediately stop the meeting. Now, the legal effect of that is that it didn't happen. There was no decisions that were made at that meeting because it wasn't in a properly noticed public meeting. So there's no requirement that meeting minutes be published or audiotapes be kept. So the decision with respect to the FOIA was to deny it because simply there's no documents that exist, and they frankly weren't required to exist, weren't required to create those minutes. So my recommendation would be for council to entertain a motion to deny this appeal and uphold the FOIA coordinator's original response, and I wanted to prepare or pass out a letter to that effect. And it does explain the facts of the case, which we've just, I think everyone's in agreement of what happened, that there was no... The notice was discovered to be incorrect during the meeting, and so the meeting was simply stopped. So that's our recommendation for a motion. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
It seems straightforward to me. We tried to have a meeting, but we were informed that you questioned whether or not it was ever on the website. We were informed that it wasn't, so we realized we couldn't have a meeting because it wasn't properly noted or notified, posted. And so technically, we didn't have a meeting.
But wouldn't we have the minutes of at least a roll call or at least the vote? I mean, we would have some recording of that we were here. I mean, it's... There wouldn't be much, you know? Maybe a couple sentences that all of us were here and that it wasn't posted. I mean, there's got to be some record of us at least being there. I mean, the newspaper knew we were there.
Well, I think there's a difference between having a record, you know, there might have an agenda prepared, for example, you know? There's... But there was no meeting in a legal sense because it couldn't happen. And the thing about minutes, and what you have to be careful of, is that there's a legal tenet in municipal law that a public body speaks through its minutes and resolutions. So if you prepare minutes that give votes of a meeting that didn't exist, it causes confusion. In our opinion, there's just no legal requirement in circumstances like this where the legal effect is there was no meeting, because nothing valid happened to that meeting that could have a legal effect for the business and policy of the city.
But this is where it's confusing, is one minute we say there wasn't any violation of the Open Meetings Act, and now we're saying we're not going to provide the meeting up until the... That's where it's confusing for me. There was no violation, so it seems like whatever took place up till our adjourning the meeting would be like any other meeting that took place. We had a lot of discussion. It was probably half an hour to 40 minutes. And so that's where I'm confused. If there wasn't a violation, then why is it not a meeting?
Well, it's... The notice wasn't properly posted, so there's two routes to go. Is to either do what the city did, cancel the meeting, or continue on with the meeting, publish notice like it's actual legal effect. Then you're in a situation where you call into question whether decisions were made coming out, even a roll call, you know, even a call to the public. But the simple fact is, it wasn't a meeting, it was stopped in its tracks, it wasn't even adjourned. There was no... It wasn't a legal meeting. There's no requirement to have minutes.
You mean, there's no requirement to have minutes because it wasn't a legal meeting?
Because it wasn't a properly noticed special meeting. You know, when the cases come out of this, when they talk about when people move forward in light of this and there's decisions made, and then there's litigation over the effect of those decisions, that's why you stop the meeting, stop it in its tracks. Everyone acknowledged there was a mistake made. That's the proper thing to do in light of that situation. To call that... So there was no meeting, there's no legal effect to what you did or did not do that day. I wasn't at that meeting, so I... But there was no legal meeting under the Open Meetings Act that would require the creation and publication of minutes.
Is there still... The audiotapes exist?
I don't know, Councilmember.
My understanding is that when the... Once it was determined that there was no meeting, that the normal course of action is that they were recorded over. I don't think there's actually any in existence at this point.
There is not any audiotapes anymore? So before we actually had a chance to deal with this appeal, the audiotapes were disposed of?
It was determined at that night, Councilmember Stevens, that there was no meeting. This appeal came thereafter, so there was no action for the city council to discuss or deliberate on.
And who made that determination to get rid of the audiotape, then?
Councilmember Stevens, there was no meeting that took place that evening. There was no action for the city council to deliberate on.
No, but what I was... The question I was asking you is who made the decision to get rid of the audiotape from that meeting?
I don't believe there was any decision or order made by anybody to anyone. It was told publicly when the council was together that the meeting was over, that there was no meeting, that there was no need to make minutes or anything at that point.
So nobody... You're saying nobody made the decision? Someone made the decision to get rid of the tapes?
Councilmember Stevens.
It's an easy...
What you're alleging is not...
I'm not alleging anything. I'm just asking a simple...
I just... I want to be clear, because I don't want there to be any misinterpretation. There's no decision to get rid of the tape as if it was a decision to do away with it. The normal course of business would be, there was no minutes, there was no need to retain an audiotape because there was no meeting. There was nothing of legal effect that came out of that. And so I don't want there to be any implication that there was a decision made to destroy or whatever that implies, you know?
No, I'm just asking a factual... Somebody had to make the decision that we don't need these tapes. Somebody had to know.
We made the decision when we just didn't have the meeting. So we, as a council, would have to accept that responsibility. There was no meeting. We determined we made a mistake, and so by legal advice, we stopped the meeting.
We stopped the meeting, but who would have known about the tape? That would have been a nice solution, is just to say, hey, the audiotape.
What would the purpose be, retain the tape? There was no meeting, there's no legal effect, there doesn't need to be a record, because nothing happened from a legal perspective.
If the tape was there, what legal ramifications would that put the city in by turning that tape or the roll call over? I mean, is there some legal thing that I'm missing here?
I hate to raise my hand, because I don't want people to think I'm being goofy, but I think that this is the kind of conversation we should have had in a closed session, and trying to be very open and transparent about the conversation and the discussion the council is having. I think these are good questions as well. I'm not suggesting that your questions are poor, but I think that this is an example, perhaps, of where there could have been a frank communication with the city attorney in a closed session.
But this is exactly why I didn't want to go into closed session prior to asking this question, because if I would have raised it in closed session, I couldn't have raised it in an open meeting.
No, I understand.
You understand what I'm saying? So I would have had to sit here, and I would have had to tape my mouth shut, and that's very difficult for me to do at times. I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for this. I'm trying to say, you know, okay, so all the council was there, and we met at such and such a time, and it was determined that we couldn't meet because it wasn't posted correctly. You know, I'm just trying to see the value of not turning that, those minutes over. I just don't see any value in...
The normal course of business is that the tapes are used to create minutes, and then the minutes are approved by council. If there's no need to create minutes, there's no need to keep a tape. It wasn't a decision that had anything to do with this particular FOIA request. It was just the normal course of city business. You don't need the tape, you don't need the city minutes. I guess I don't want to dwell on it any further because I don't know that there's really anything more I can say.
But I just, you know, we just continue and continue to go in these directions.
Well, I mean, I take from the... I'm sorry.
You know, I don't feel like we're going in a direction, and I don't understand the frustration of, we called or we stopped the meeting because of the situation we found ourselves in, you knew that it hadn't been posted properly, we stopped the meeting. So...
What more could you have done to comply with the Open Meetings Act?
It's the best thing we could have done.
It's a proper thing to do. You know, the Open Meetings Act allows, even after a lawsuit, for you to kind of fix mistakes along the way. You saw a mistake, with the notice, you recognized it right away, and you did what you were supposed to do. And I don't... The fact that there's no minutes is the fact that there was no meaning.
Okay. You know, in defense to the... Look at first...
No, what?
Not to... I know some don't want to talk about it, but, I mean, then the letter, I can see why we cause these things. We send a letter to them saying, "The special meeting didn't take place, the meeting was canceled." If I was a person from the public that read the article in the paper, I would look at that and go, "There was a meeting, there was an article in the paper."
Right.
And there wasn't a clearly...
But the article said that the meeting was canceled.
But the meeting was canceleding. I think most people consider canceling a meeting, we never even got in the room, it was canceled beforehand. August 4th, we canceled that meeting. We didn't even come. We had dialogue for 30 minutes to 40 minutes. Matter of fact, part of the message was I was trying to obstruct business, because I brought a concern about us making sure we followed, and my response was we're having a temper tantrum and obstructing business, which... So people know that. I get talked about that a lot, they read that in the paper. They see that as a meeting.
But it just legally... Whatever was in the paper, whatever was people think, and I think that's the... Why when someone sends a FOIA request like this, we have this thing, we explain in our appeal letter exactly what happened. Nobody's trying to hide exactly what happened.
Well, exactly what had happened would have probably made it a little clearer that we met and then found out we had a...
That's what it says in the appeal receipt.
But if we didn't... If we... One minute saying we didn't violate the Open Meetings Act, then why wasn't it a meeting if we didn't have a violation?
Again, I'm your legal counsel, I'm not going to get into all this. This is the type of stuff that we cover in closed session. I mean, my opinion is there's no violation, the city council did the right thing, there's no requirement to create minutes.
We're on the same side, by the way. We are all here for the public. I'm just asking... I'm just asking. I mean, it's very you're I know you're making statements again about not a closed session, but again, just adding this appeal, I don't know what damage that would have done.
Well, I'm just very I'm very adamant, very confident that this what the city does is act in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and does its very best to do that and takes very deliberate steps to do that. And I think that what the city did on July 7th is a testament to that. As soon as you realize there was a problem, it stopped. The city and why is that? Because the city wants to act in accordance with the Open Means Act and do everything in a transparent manner. So I guess I just bristle at the at the implication here that the cities should have done minutes because there was things that should have been said to me. No, there just is there's no legal requirement to have minutes after a situation like this.
And in a situation like this, I'm sitting here wondering why we're not looking at the fact that we did something right in the best interest of transparency in the city of Cadillac and still we're wanting to find something wrong.
No, it's not about wrong, but I could see, you know, instead of having all these legal things and this go to a court, we seem to really be emphasizing a lot of that lately. A nice solution would have been, here's the audio tape. We have nothing to hide. We were meeting, even if it wasn't a meeting. We can get technical, but we could have said, here's the audio tape. We don't we don't have the minutes. There weren't minutes. And I bet that would make it happy.
Why couldn't we just say what we said? There aren't there isn't an audio tape. There wasn't a meeting and they provided the legal statement.
Well, I'm just I I'm disappointed that there was I figured if there were audio tape, that would have been a nice solution. We end the thing, we move on. That's
Well, I think that based on everything that we've been provided here this evening and everything that's been said, we need to put some closure on this and have a motion made.
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal and uphold the original response for the reasons stated in the city's written response to the appeal letter.
Is there going to be a second to that, the support?
If legally we didn't have a meeting, you know, that information is there. Now they have all the information that we have. We don't have any record of a meeting.
Okay, we're not going to get support of that motion. Is there another motion that someone would like to make?
If we were doing this, the thing that I see is this letter. It doesn't clearly state that we can't provide audio tape because there's no audio tape anymore. And a clarification of how the meeting proceeded, so it doesn't look like it was canceled.
But it was canceled.
It didn't proceed.
Oh, Mr. Counsel, I'm not sure if you found it, but the letter from the city with respect to the denial is in your packet. I'm not sure if you're referring back to that at all or not. It stated July 24th, 2014.
If you want to amend the letter to specifically state that the requested documents, the meeting minutes and the audio tape do not exist under the name provided. And that's the standard language you use when you don't have a document under FOIA. We can certainly amend it to clarify that. I think the latter part of the letter, as you stated, clearly identifies what happened at that meeting to the person making the FOIA request, Mr. Richardson. I'd be happy to make that adjustment if that's
So you would need to just amend your motion to reflect that.
All right, would someone like to make that motion with the amendment?
I'll amend the motion to reflect that change.
I don't even know what that was.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I don't know what the change.
We're adding to the letter that we're unable to provide them because they don't exist, the audio tape and minutes.
So where exactly would you put that in the letter?
I was just there's already stuck up here. There's already a statement that says it. It's the third full sentence of paragraph two. The city certified by letter that your requested documents. And then we could put in the minutes and the audio tape did not exist under any provided by you. Your appeal is denied for the same reason.
And?
So we would add after documents, the minutes and the audio tape from the, you know, from July 7th or
Would it also better serve to say why they don't exist? Because they weren't required? Because the meeting didn't happen?
I mean, we could add in the meeting was was canceled.
Because it wasn't posted correctly? I mean, we all know that.
Well, we said the last sentence says, and I'm just going to read it, as you stated in your appeal letter, which I think Mr. Richardson knows the facts of this, it sounds like from his appeal letter, the July 7th, 2014 meeting was not properly noticed. When that was discovered, the session ended and no official meeting of the City Council was considered to have taken space.
You already said it.
As such, meeting minutes were not required. I think that's
You said it.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that addition, amended motion, do we have support?
I think you have the authority to support a motion.
I do. Do I have the
Ask your attorney.
I do. Then I'll provide the support for that motion. Is there any further discussion? If not, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
No.
Melama?
No.
Shippers?
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Filken?
Yes.
As I say, Mayor members of council, the motion, because there was a tie, actually failed. You have the opportunity to have continued discussion with then somebody making another motion. You also could move on within your agenda. There is a legal requirement that this is heard within a certain timeframe and you can call a special meeting within that window of time to bring this item up again.
I would like to continue our discussion, to keep moving through the agenda. And we have 10 days, which will require us to come back together as a council, as a council of five, and continue this discussion and bring it up back up for a vote.
It has to have one or the other or by the lack of supporting?
That that motion failed.
It has to have one though?
It has to have action by council as the appellate body. So whatever action that is, has to be supported by the majority of the form.
Okay.
Are we moving on?
We are moving on.
The next issue is the Freedom of Information Act appeal done or requested by Mr. Gordon Maxwell. And Mr. Maxwell had a four-part FOIA request. He asked originally for a copy of the legal opinion done by Mr. Homier concerning Mayor Filken's conflict of interest in the Blackburn case, to any and all correspondence, including legal fees by Foster Swift received by the city of Cadillac or spent by the city for expenses regarding that legal opinion that it referred to during the May 5th meeting mentioned above concerning Mayor Filken's conflict of interest. Copies of any correspondence, communications and other documents from any and all parties, including but not limited to written communications by email, fax, before the legal opinion until today's date that discuss or include discussions pertaining to this legal opinion concerning Mayor Filken's conflict of interest as mentioned above, and a copy of the request to prepare this legal opinion from the city of Cadillac and a copy of all correspondence that includes discussion about the request to prepare this legal opinion. This request, you should have copies of all this just so you can refer to it, was and I think I wanted to just clarify something before Mr. Gordon gets his chance to speak because I just wanted to be very clear. In his appeal, there's a substantive part of appeal and there's a procedural part of his appeal. And the first part of his appeal, he claims that the city was not timely in its response. And I just wanted to make sure that the council understands that the city did comply with the time time constraints of FOIA. We have documentation that the extension letter was mailed on July 2nd, which is within five business days after the original response. And his final letter was mailed on July or July 17th, which was in that 10-day business extension. So I just wanted you to say that. And then we're going to allow Mr. Maxwell to have have the floor to give his to discuss his appeal. He also had submitted a written correspondence, which should be in your packet as well.
Yep. The material came in, you'll see two different postmarks on it. And I received it on the 16th.
Yeah, this is the one that says it was mailed here from the city of Cadillac on July 2nd. And it looks like it went through Grand Rapids on July 14. And I I mean, I don't work for I don't understand why that would have happened, but this this is the date that the city mailed it and that's proof that the city mailed it on that date. And that that there ends their obligation. Mismanagement or misdirection from the post office is not something that's going to be and I I it's it seems like you did get it.
It was quite late to receive it.
Correct, but that was mailed. I think that evident that shows that it was mailed. And I think Sandy personally hand-delivered it to the post office that day, which we can certainly attest to. So
So that refers to the first part of my FOIA appeal.
Yes.
Was the the date issue.
Yeah.
How it was so far.
Thank you.
That was weird.
I did make the FOIA appeal on the 25th. And now, you know, you probably have the copy of the appeal for the FOIA. And there were some items in there that I requested. And the first thing was the legal opinion that was that I had requested. It was given by the city attorney to the mayor. And it appears that that opinion was strictly for the mayor, not for the whole council. And I believe that the city attorney works for the whole council. But the opinion that was talked about was just for the mayor's question of a conflict of interest. That's what I asked for. That's why I asked for that copy of legal opinion. It's being that it's just for one person that the opinion is about and not the whole council. I I don't believe there's a conflict of interest there that that was the first part of that. There's there's a not a client attorney relationship problem because the the opinion was not for the whole council or about the whole council. It was just one person. And then I the second part of that is I requested the city attorney's invoices and learned that I was trying to figure out how much this cost, what it was all about. And you did send me a redacted invoice that makes it kind of hard to determine with all the parts that are blacked out in there, what the costs were, other than I'm estimating them to be about $2,200. And the intent was, how much did that opinion cost the city? The the opinion about did the mayor have a conflict of interest or not? And with you with all the blacked out areas in here, that invoice was approximately a $3,200 invoice. And if I'm adding up the top part of that, that comes into around $2,000, $2,200 in charges, that that opinion may have cost a community. I I don't see that being a good value of the city's funds to there again, the opinion was for one person, if there was a conflict of interest, not the whole council. My last part of this is, I was asking about the correspondence about this legal opinion. How was it requested? Why did we have it? Did the entire council ask for an opinion? Did the city manager ask for an opinion? Did Mr. Homier just decide to write up an opinion anyway? My my question was, how did we acquire this opinion and why did we require? There had to be in your response was, there's no communication or no copies of communication for that. Somehow, someone had to ask the attorney to form an opinion, which appears to have cost in a neighborhood of a couple thousand dollars. So I'm asking for the copies of all correspondence that led to the development of that opinion. And I believe that you would have had the the copies of the FOIA appeal request here. So if you would like to to discuss that, but I'd like to see the how did this opinion get formed and what was the total cost for it? Thank you.
You should have a copy of the city's original original response. And having having heard Mr. Maxwell's appeal here tonight and having considered his written correspondence, I wanted to present a copy, should have it by now, of a proposed appeal response. It's obviously in draft form. But it addresses the original request, the city's original response, and then Mr. Maxwell's comments on appeal. And I just if you'll bear with me, since there's four of us, I'd like to take them one by one. The first one is a copy of the legal opinion. Obviously, that legal opinion is subject to attorney-client privilege, so I don't want to discuss the subject matter of that opinion, other than to say that it's the city's position at the time and I guess position now, my position now, that that the presumption that it was a personal opinion for the mayor is just an incorrect presumption. It wasn't. It was for the city, the city council, and it had to do with with city business. And it was an appropriate city communication. So with that, my recommendation would be to deny that portion of the appeal and uphold the original response from the FOIA coordinator. Secondly, Mr. Maxwell did ask for all invoices received by the city of Cadillac for expenses regarding the legal opinion. And as you can see from your packet, we provided a redacted legal opinion that kept in the detail of how much money was spent and, you know, the hours and the money spent. But was what was redacted was the information that is subject to attorney-client privilege. Confidential communications between attorneys and the city are redacted on that document. Confidential communications between, um, attorneys and, and the city are redacted on that document. Again, I think the basis for Mr. Maxwell's appeal is that it's not a city, uh, it wasn't a letter for the city, it was the letter personally for the mayor in her personal capacity. And that, again, without getting into the content of what that opinion was, that presumption is just not correct. So the city's, um, redactions were proper in that regard. The third, uh, portion of Mr. Maxwell's request was for copies of any correspondence, communications, and other documents from any and all parties, basically, to get, to cut to the chase, relating to the legal opinion. Now, this was some, when we get requests that are copies of all documents pertaining to, this is very broad language, it's very hard to determine what documents are, um, responding to. So we put a provision in there that, that we thought that was an overbroad communication. And, but to the extent we could identify certain documents, documents pertaining to that legal opinion, those documents were privileged, the legal opinion itself, for example. Um, I think our, our instincts on the, the fact that we believe that it was overbroad were solidified when we received Mr. Maxwell's appeal. Because as you can see in Mr. Maxwell's appeal letter, um, you know, he says that he believes there must be something in writing that's connected to any discussion of the mayor's conflict of interest and the city's legal opinion, so it looks like he was looking for something a little different, or maybe wasn't even clear about the nature of the request. So we, what we, um, recommend for this is, again, to, uh, deny the appeal and uphold the decision for the reasons stated in this, uh, appeal letter. Um, and finally, he asked for a copy of the request to prepare a legal opinion. Um, as you know, um, the Freedom of Information Act governs documents that exist, and it's not, um, there's no requirement under FOIA that the city create documents to respond to the request. So requests that may be verbal or have no written, um, communications behind them wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily have documents. So it's not to say, and I don't want any implication that Mike, you know, as Mr. Gordon, you know, just decided to write a legal opinion one day on this. There was a request for it, it's just there's no documents that identify that request. And so for that reason, we also recommend that the city, uh, deny the FOIA appeal and uphold the, uphold the original response for the reasons more specifically stated in this appeal, that frankly, that the doesn't, FOIA doesn't require that information be recorded, and it only gives a right to access records that are actually recorded. Does council have any questions for me?
So for example, if the city manager emailed the city attorney and said, "Give me a legal opinion on XYZ." That, because a legal opinion was developed on XYZ, is not FOI-able?
No, there's, um, that's a good question. It, there's two-step process to determine whether something is subject to FOIA. One, does it meet the definition of public record? And I would say if there were an email from city manager asking for a legal opinion from the city attorney, that would be a public record. Step two is whether that's exempt from disclosure. And the answer to that would be yes, because that's a communication between client and attorney regarding, um, confidential communications. So if there were, if hypothetically speaking, if there were emails, those would be, it'd be a little bit different, they would be subject to attorney-client. They'd be denied, it would be subject to attorney-client privilege likely, depending on the, obviously depending on the email.
So if the city attorney wanted an opinion on XYZ, is it, can that occur by him or her calling you up and requesting it?
The city attorney?
Or rights first.
Yeah, the city, yeah.
A month the city manager.
Oh, city manager, yeah.
Yes.
We.
That happens all the time.
Yes.
It doesn't have to be in writing.
No, it doesn't have to be approved by council, and there's no requirement, it happens all the time.
And I, I appreciate you clarifying that. It may have been an assumption that this legal opinion was for one individual. Instead of for the council.
The theme is true with this appeal, as with Mr. Richardson's appeal, the council does have to make a decision within 10 days.
So when you talked about, you prepared this response to the appeal, and it's in draft form, meaning that it could use some tweakage, especially after the discussion tonight.
Yeah, just like the last one, where some suggestions were made for clarification. Certainly, the council is the ultimate body to make the decision on what happens with respect to this appeal.
Are there any questions? Any additional questions? Thoughts, concerns?
You mean for the city attorney, or just the council discussion?
Either or.
Well, the only, you know, we've had these before, a couple of questions, is usually we have the, the documents in question in front of us, so we can review them, at least past appeals. We've been provided the documents, so we can look at them to determine if they should, or could be given out.
We usually do that in closed session. We didn't have the opportunity to go into closed session.
Well, we've done it before, too, in the open, where they just provide us the, the documents here.
If I may, council, the, the redacted documents provided to Mr. Maxwell, would you know what?
Yeah, those were the only documents, actually, because the rest of them didn't have, were all denied, because there's no, you know, for the various reasons in the letter. So the only documents that were actually provided were the redacted copies of the legal bills.
I do see, one of the, not just on this one, but the number three one. You know, if you're looking from the public, it, we gotta be careful, we don't have this simple answer that just says, "Your, your, your request was too vague." Because, I mean, he had asked copies of any correspondence, communications, other documents from any and all parties, including but not limited to emails and fax, before the legal opinion until, till today's date, that discuss or include discussions pertaining to this legal opinion. And then it goes on. I don't know how, I don't know what kind of level we're putting on the public. Like, how much clearer can they get as to what? I mean, I read that, and it's pretty clear. It just, we gotta be careful, that doesn't become our safe answer to just always say, "Uh, too vague." Because that seems pretty, pretty much saying, any discussions or emails or whatever. And I know they do mention, uh, the attorney-client privilege, but if there were discussions between any members of council, or the city manager to council, or anything like that, I, I don't think that would be. So I do have some concern on that one, that, um, I mean, unless we tell him how he should have wrote that. We could use that for every response. We could always say to every person that comes forward, "It's too vague, we just don't know what you mean."
If I can make two comments to that. One, there's, um, some AG opinions that suggest a request for any and all documents is, is overbroad. And secondly, um, I think if you, if you read Mr. Um, Mr. Maxwell's appeal letter, he states in his appeal letter something different than he's asking for here. So I think the initial take of this was very confusing as to what he's looking for. I think that's sort of solidified by the fact that when he sends his appeal, he suggests something different. When you're talking about a request for any and all email, that's a, that's a huge request from a city like this. It's not just, uh, a simple talking to two people trying to request that. We did look at documents, the documents as stated in the letter, that we could figure out that were identified to that were subject to attorney-client privilege.
But we, so there are documents that are out there?
The legal, the legal opinion itself.
Was there any other, was there any other communications?
Well, I, again, I don't, I don't want to get into all of what, I'm just telling you, what was there was subject to attorney-client privilege. Otherwise, we determined that it was too broad.
Right, but in the past, when we've had things, we've, we've been given, the council's been given these documents to review to determine if they would be by attorney-client privilege or not.
Well, documents relating, pertaining to, I have a problem with that, just as a, trying to figure out what that means. But documents pertaining to the legal opinion would be subject to attorney-client privilege.
Councilmember Stevens, I do recall, in several occasions in a closed session, we would have, um, possibly provided some additional information, like the opinion again. But in other, um, requests for public documents that we've had, um, especially when it refers to emails and communications, they're very, very voluminous. I don't recall making lots of copies of, of all of that. It's possible that we did, but certainly not in every case.
And I, I think if you review, um, what the city does, I mean, the city, it's not like this is the standard response to every FOIA request. This was very carefully looked at, with this particular way, the way it was worded, and that's the determination that was made at the FOIA coordinator level.
I just don't know how he would, anybody like, anybody could write it then, too. If you don't put any and all, then it seems like, I could see where people do that. We get that a lot, because they're trying to say, because then if you're too direct, and you're not giving everything, he just sounds like he wanted everything on it. I don't know if Mr. Maxwell can expand on that or not, but, um, of what you were looking for.
I was asking for the communications just on the legal opinion. Now, when I said any and all, that related to the period of time from the, uh, of the legal opinion being requested, and until I sent this letter. Oh, that was, the, the goal was to accomplish, to acquire emails or letters that dealt with that opinion, with the, with the thought of the need for the opinion, or the, uh, the requesting of the opinion, or even a finalized letter that, "Dear city, the opinion is now complete." Understanding or thinking that you would probably redact some parts of the letter, but I would still receive a, uh, copy of the email or the letter showing the date and time, and from who, and to who, and the, to whom, and the letter would be sent to, or the request. And thinking that any and all was just, not any and all emails or letters that the city would send out, but just dealing with this one particular topic. After all, it was just one legal opinion that we were talking about, not all of your legal opinions. So I would, I had expected a, uh, some letters possibly similar to your billing that had various parts redacted.
But I, I, and I appreciate, I just think it kinda bears in mind, if you look at his actual request, any copies of all correspondence, communications, other documents from any and all parties, I mean, there just, there's components of this that are just very broad and vague, and those are types of things from under FOIA. You, and the fact that we are asking for so much clarification, and that it's not clear exactly from what the request was made, at least in my opinion, I think, um, supports the, the recommendation.
And with any, any and all parties, I'm assuming that just a, two or three of you would have been involved in the request for this opinion, not numerous people. But if we're talking about just the one particular opinion, how many people were involved with the request for that opinion? Could it have been, even if it was the entire city council and the city manager? And possibly the city attorney agreeing with, "Yes, I should have an opinion on that." But at the most, we're talking about, uh, half a dozen people. And, and really doubtful that, that many were involved in it. But somebody had to request this opinion. And I'm trying to figure out who requested the opinion, was it one or two people? How was the re, what, what was the need for the opinion, and, and who decided to request the opinion, is the basis of all of this. I probably didn't word it quite correctly for you, but, uh, I, I guess I would ask you to, uh, explain to me how I could have better worded this letter, so it was more clear to the rest of you. Especially maybe in, for future FOI's, that would help. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Questions? Then at this time, we will be looking for a motion?
Is there any other way to respond to him, now that you've heard his explanation? We, we would need to likely, um, discuss that in closed session. And that would be something that would require, obviously, the city council to review the documents to, to determine, you know, attorney-client, because essentially what was cited in there was attorney-client privilege, too. And that's the, kind of the nature that really, we probably have to discuss in a closed session. Like what we planned on doing at 5:50?
Yeah, because it really seems, especially now, now that that's out there, that was, would have been real damaging to the city to, to say the reason we were going into closed session.
Okay. Let's be more productive. Is there going to be a motion that can be made this evening for us to vote on?
You guys, uh?
No, we guys. Is there going to be a motion that we can support? This evening? If there's not, then this becomes part of our discussion that we're gonna have to have within the next 10 days. So. It'd be nice if we could take care of business. So I guess we're moving on. Please.
Okay. Thank you, uh, mayor and members of city council. Next on the agenda are items under the city manager's report. Give me just a moment here to catch up. File. The, uh, first item are bids and recommendations regarding, uh, restroom facilities for the Rotary Park Pavilion project. We do have, uh, in your packet, a copy, um, of the bid that was received. Additionally, we have laid out, uh, in front of everybody, um, an additional council communication on the item that includes information regarding the other bid that was also received. The packet was printed prior to that information, um, being put in there. There were two bids received, uh, one from Oreshaw Construction, uh, the other from Robert Cole, Inc. Mike Coy, I believe, is here this evening, and is going to give a quick presentation to the city council as to the recommendation, uh, and also the request for a small contingency amount, I believe Mike's to be able to do that? can you add it for that?
My, my request is for a contingency. The recommendation by DK Design, that's, that's the recommendation. But what we're asking for is an additional $900 contingency on top of that for materials. The bid clearly, because of our September 30th completion date timeframe, the bid clearly calls for stock material. What we have learned is that basically if we don't, for example, like the color of the brick, we're looking at roughly a six-week timeframe, which just blows the September 30th completion out of the water. What we did here just this afternoon was that for an upcharge of $900, manufacturer can kind of expedite it, both the manufacturer and the delivery of it, possibly as quick as two weeks, three weeks, but it doesn't put us out of whack with the September 30th construction schedule. So the contingency is not because the material costs more, it's an upcharge to expedite the manufacturer and shipping if we don't like the stock color. If we like the stock color, we're, we're fine.
And that dollar amount that you're requesting then is, what's the final dollar amount that you're requesting?
Well, the recommendation from DK Design is...
That's the one, 140?
140,000, 250. Add 900 to that, 1...
I was going to say, I'm sorry, on the communication that Owen had provided me, it actually shows 138,750. So that's 1500 dollar difference.
That, there was a 1,500 dollar item in the bid, and that had to do with the completion date, substantial completion date of September 30th.
Thank you.
The contractors did quote higher to complete it that quickly, and that was paramount to the grant that we received from the Michigan Council for the Arts and Cultural Affairs. It clearly gave a September 30th date. So that's kind of the reason for the expediting. If we didn't have to expedite, we could pick a color and it wouldn't cost any more for the material.
So the other two alternates on the bid from Orshol aren't needed?
I haven't looked at that. I'm looking at the recommendation from DK Design, and I believe it was 140,000, 250, which would have been the Orshol bid of 1,000, or 138,750 plus the 1,500 to complete it, or substantially complete it by September 30th. But the DK Design is 140,000, 250. And again, this 900 dollar contingency is only if we don't like the color of the stock material.
And it's council, members of council, it'd be 140, 1, 150.
That's all I have.
Make a motion to award the contract for the construction of the restroom facilities at the Rotary Park to Orshol Construction in the amount of 100, I'm going to go this way, 140,250 with a 900 dollar contingency added to that if we need it.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, Spulman, Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Thanks for the builder for coming and his patience, too.
Thanks for listening to this entire meeting.
Oh, you are?
So you have to stick around longer than that yet.
Mayor, members of council, without any further ado, the next request is a request to purchase two lawnmowers. These are riding lawnmowers. We did receive bids. We received three, three prices, three bids. One lawnmower is for the cemetery maintenance operations, and the other would be for parks maintenance operations. The recommendation this evening is to go with woodland equipment in accordance with their bid. We do have funding available through our 73 operating fund and Parks Fund of General Fund, and the total cost would be 15,998 dollars.
I'd make a motion that we approve the bid for woodland equipment in the amount of 7,000, 15,998 dollars to purchase the two riding lawnmowers as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Spulman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers? Mayor Felkins?
Yes.
Moving right along, this next request is with respect to stump grinding services. We did put out for bid those services to remove stumps around town. We anticipate there being approximately up to 8,000 inches of stumps that need to be ground down with an approximate cost of 15,000 to 18,000 dollars being incurred. Four bids were received, and the recommendation this evening is to go with Fargo Tree Service, who bid $2.25 per inch. That is the lowest bid that we received.
I was, I was just looking at that. I mean, the difference of those bids per inch, that makes a big difference. Works out well when we, when we do the bidding process, and then it ends up being loco too, is the lowest, is a double bonus.
Also, the stumps was a concern last week, Wednesday, at our Issues and Solutions over coffee. This one keeps coming up, stumps. So I'm glad that we're dealing with it.
Is that your motion?
Could we have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to award the contract for stump grinding and site restoration to Fargo Tree Company in accordance with their bid.
Support.
Nancy, Nancy, I'm not tired. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers? Spulman? Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Jeff, if you are still awake, would you mind walking city council through this recommendation, please?
True.
Thank you.
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll walk through. You just be available for questions. This has to deal with property appraisal services. I'll just say that in summary, we would like to make sure we have a certified, if I'm saying it perhaps correctly, a certified appraisal service on hand to do the appraisals to potential new wellfield sites. If we have the appraisal, appraisal service certified under the drinking water revolving fund criteria, then we'll be able to utilize those low interest loan dollars for the acquisition of property as well. Just as another piece of reference, the city did take advantage of those low interest loan dollars. When we put in the infrastructure at our Crosby Road wellfield site, we were not able to utilize those loan dollars when we initially acquired that property as part of the Phase 1 of our redevelopment of our city wellfield locations. There are four locations, or four areas that have been identified, I believe, by the consulting engineers?
Our consulting engineers, when we put in Phase 1, obviously, we, we looked where we could put in wells, and north was ruled out because of the contamination that's currently there. West, we have the Lake Mitchell. So it really gave us to the east and the south. We did the east in the first Phase 1. Our consulting engineer at the time, at the time, we had a long discussion whether we should do what we currently have in one big wellfield, or if we should do two wellfields. And it was decided to do two wellfields, two smaller ones, so they didn't influence each other. And if one went bad, you'd still have a second wellfield. Well, we did the one to the east, and then with locating that to the east, you've got to be so far away from it, or it acts as one, even though it might be 200 acres apart or 300 acres apart, hydraulically it'd act as one wellfield. So that's why the southern ones were identified earlier, and they were in the city or just outside the city, right next to our borders. One of the two, that was the criteria. We had a list of in the city, next to the city, and then out of the city, and we ranked them, and...
If I may just jump in, this information, well, quite a while ago, was shared with the city council in a closed session previously with respect to the different sites that were out there. The consultant was going to then narrow down based upon their testing.
We have tested those sites initially. The council approved us to go out and test those sites. They all came back good. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having appraisals on all of them. And, and there's actually, though we have four sites identified, there's three parcels. One parcel is a larger chunk, 20 acres, and then that same parcel, we were wondering if we just did a four-acre parcel there. So instead of having the big, big chunk. So even though there's four appraisals listed, it's for three set of properties. And the consulting engineer did tell us if we did the two, if we did the 20-acre parcel and the four-acre parcel, this price would actually be lower because a lot of the information could be used from the 20-acre parcel onto the four-acre parcel to get that information. So it'd be, or we could just do three, or we could do one. We didn't have to do all of these at one shot, but we wanted to do, if we did, that's the way they presented it, it'd be this amount. But I, I think it would be, actually be about 12,000 less, 17,000 less if we did all four.
The other, the other part that I wanted to add as well is, we did publicly seek proposals. There was only one that was received. It's the company that we're recommending this evening, the company out of East Lansing, Michigan, called Velbridge Property Advisors. And the request then would be for the fee not to exceed the 36,500 dollars.
So how are we going to determine which one of these we have appraised?
Well, it's up to council. We can have them all appraised. We could have, they're all really good water quality. So you can't really go wrong with choosing one over the other. And I think I would recommend having them all appraised and seeing which one fits more the council's idea of how much they would wish to spend on a wellfield.
I would concur with that. This way you have options.
No, one guy might say, you know, if we just narrow it to one, that person might think he's got really great water, and he might hold out for more than that, that amount that the DWRF will fund. And, and we can pay that amount, but DWRF will only fund whatever that federal appraisal is. Everything above that comes out of our, our pockets ourselves. So...
And I think, and Jeff, if I'm saying something inaccurately, please, please feel free to stop and correct me. I think what our utilities director was trying to indicate regarding the, the 20 acres versus the four acres is that it's, it's possible we may only be looking at a smaller wellfield at that particular location. But for the purposes of moving forward, I think the most prudent action would be to authorize it with not to exceed the full amount. Likely, we'll have them simply do the larger chunk, so that there will be some cost savings. And that'd be, unless, unless the appraisal service is not able to also give us information on the smaller piece. The, the way it's laid out here, I think, might be a little confusing to look at. If you're only going to do the smaller piece, it's essentially the same price. But if I understood what Jeff was saying correctly, and we did talk about it last week, if the larger chunk is analyzed, we're going to then have that necessary data. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah. Basically, the appraisal group bid these, each, each request as a separate bid. So it'd be, you know, this amount for bid one, this amount for bid two, this amount for the third parcel, this amount for the fourth. When you start the two parcels that are the same, if you're combining them, he wouldn't charge you that amount for each one. He'd charge you a lot less because a lot of that information would have already been gathered. But if you just want to do the four acres, it's going to charge, cost you as much as the 20 acres.
Is the four acres part of the 20 acres?
Yes.
Or is it different?
Yep. No, it's a smaller chunk of the 20 acres. But there's some, there's some infrastructure or some, some things out there that make it a lot more expensive.
Why wouldn't it just be 15,000 dollars for the 20 acres?
It would be. It will be. But then you won't get the four-acre parcel.
I thought, I thought the four-acre parcel was part of the 20.
It is. But you will not know what the appraisal of the four-acre parcel is. You'll know what the appraisal of the 20-acre parcel is.
But then the total amount of the bid should be 15,000 less.
Right. And we can do 15,000. But if you want to do both, if you just want to do the four-acre chunk...
If I can, if I can just try to clarify a little bit.
Please do.
Yes. So if you can just kind of picture in your minds a circle, and let's say that circle equals 20 acres.
It's got to be square. We're talking acres.
So that square equals 20 acres. The four-acre separate line item is a part of that 20 acres. And when we pay the 15,000 dollar fee for the analysis of those 20 acres, if we also want an opinion as to the value of a separate four-acre piece, it's not going to be an additional 15,000. It's going to be another couple thousand, which is not unreasonable. And so that's what, and I'm throwing that out there as a, as a, for instance, because you're looking at a separate opinion based upon a separate size of land. So there's going to be different work that's done for it. What Jeff was trying to say is that the only share of the work is going to be done when they analyze the full 20 acres. So it's not another full 15,000 dollar fee. It's going to be something significantly less than that because they're going to already have had that work done. It's not, you're not going to duplicate their, the work, if you will.
Well, I'm not a utilities person, so I don't mean to sound, you know, ask a stupid question. But if they're saying that, if you, if, if they're saying then that they're going to charge us 15,000 dollars for the 20 acres, and they're going to provide a quote for, oh, and by the way, if you do the four acres, why didn't they give you a dollar figure for that?
Yeah. Because they bid the four acres and the 20 acres both as individual appraisals.
I, right.
Okay. And it, and the work that you have to do for the four acres is, if you just did the four acres, you have to do all of the work that you have to do for the 20 acres. I mean, you, you still have to do all that work. They didn't know which ones we were going to pick. If we're going to pick just the four acres, the 20 acres, if we're going to pick both of them. They should have probably put a star there and said if you pick both of them...
We need a third one. There needs to be a third dollar amount there. What's the four and the 20 together?
We're going to spend 36,000 dollars.
Well, that was, that was, that was why I had mentioned, because we don't have that, that asterisk, if it's simply...
That's why you're asking for the 36.
Right. As an up to, and we're advising that we, we expect it to come in less than...
Doubles in the details, Joe.
Are the other two parcels a lot smaller?
No, actually, the other two parcels are bigger. It's the, it's what's on that 20-acre parcel that's causing the, there's some dollar things that they actually have to, we're carving out a 20-acre chunk from a larger chunk, and there's some, I don't know how to say, there's some things that actually, they have to go onto the large chunk and get how this affects the whole. So they're seeing how does this affect the 200 acres, even though you might only want 20 acres. And so it's a lot bigger, it's a lot bigger appraisal because of the property that they're actually going out for and appraising. And that's why they have to do it for the four acres. How does this four acres affect the 200 acres? The other ones, we're just buying 30 acres and they're saying, or having appraised 30 acres, we're not buying anything. And it's just, there's nothing that it can affect because it's a whole chunk. This one, we're carving out a chunk and it affects other things on the property. So...
And the other quick question I had, although I'm switching gears, so...
I'm hung up on this. I apologize, because I don't want to get hung up on anything after this long meeting. But there's no way you're going to spend 36,000 dollars.
No.
Why would I approve an expenditure up to that amount?
When the...
It doesn't make any sense that you're ever going to get there, and I don't want to give you the authority to get there because you can't. This...
But I don't know, he never, I called the appraiser on the phone and said, I don't understand how this parcel could be 15,000 for the 20 acres. understand how this parcel could be 15,000 for the 20 and 15 for the four. And he told me the whole thing about how much work they have to do and they got to do the whole acreage and all this. He said it would be less. I said, how much less? He said, I didn't, I did not calculate that out. He said it'd be about the price of the other parcels, so the three or four, three or 3,500. He wasn't specific on it. We're coming to council. I said, well, I know it will not exceed this amount if we do both of them. If we only do one, if we just say do the 20 acres, it'll be 15,000 less. But if we say do both of them, it'll be 15,000 plus another 3,000.
Again, my recommendation, Mayor, members of the city council, would be to have all of the opinions done on all of the properties. If you don't, if you don't feel comfortable authorizing it up to the maximum, I do understand that, but perhaps you just round it down to $30,000.
I'm okay with the way that the proposed motion is worded on our little cheat sheet here, rather than saying up to 36,000, just in accordance with their bid. Yeah.
But you're going to ask him for a figure before you have him?
Oh, yeah, I will have, I will have a figure before he does the work.
So he doesn't like when he's finished, just grab $12,000 or whatever. You're going to know upfront, when you say, I want both of those pieces of property done, what that second one is going to...
Right, because again, he bid each one as an individual. If we decided just to do the four acres and not any of the others, this is what it'd cost. If you did just the 20, this is what it'd cost. He understands if we combine those two, it'll be a lower price because a lot of the work would be done. A lot lower price.
Okay, thank you.
My last, my last question was just more on the wording. Usually, they're brought as bids and this is a proposal. Is that the same process that's used as the bidding process, or is that...
Say that again, Art.
Well, usually, these are presented as, like, the requests for bids went out, and these are talking about proposals that didn't go through the same process as the bidding process?
Yeah, we put it on the Mitten website, we advertised it locally in the paper, everything we did. We thought we'd get a whole bunch of appraisers, we thought we'd get local appraisers. We got one, you know, so.
All right. I'll make a motion to award the contract for property appraisal services to Velbridge Property Advisors in accordance with their bid.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, Spohman, Stevens, Melama, Mayor Felkins.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Jeff, don't go anywhere yet.
No.
This is actually you and Bruce. This next item is with respect to change order to 2014 street improvement project that's currently underway. Jeff, why don't you try to explain the merits of what this proposal is?
Yes, as the council knows, earlier this year on our CIP item, we had an extension of a water main out east of town on 55 towards, well, east out of town. Okay, anyways, when we, when that proposal was done, it was for the water main to be extended, and it was also for some drainage issues over by Francis Street, because the church on the corner of Francis and 55 was flooding. So we're extending that water main down there. Well, recently, you know, we're thinking about looping. We've always thought about looping the wellfield, and it came to our attention that there's some work that's going to be done where the, it stops at Francis Street, that if we loop the system, loop the water system over to Crosby or wherever we're looping it, we'll actually have to tear out something in a year or two to put a, to loop the system.
Looping, Jeff?
Looping the water main to help the water keep moving and not stagnate in the, in the pipes. So we thought that this would be the time maybe to actually put in some of that infrastructure, get it out of where the new construction's at. So extending some of the water main to the north on Francis Street, actually extending it across 55 to the south side of 55, putting valves on the end of it and just stopping. Now, just getting it out of where they're constructing now, so when we're done, we don't have to tear that up in two or three years, or four years, or five years. Whenever we finish the looping system, we wouldn't have to tear up new infrastructure that we just put in three or four years before. It's probably something we should have thought of when we were actually planning the extension of the water main down there, but it hadn't occurred to us until recently that, you know, we do want to loop this, it'd help our system, and we need to maybe do something before we put that infrastructure in the ground.
And just to piggyback on, Jeff, thank you for the explanation. The current project is basically a $470,000 construction project, and the change order is for $18,750. That'll bring the infrastructure across the street.
Right, yeah, that, correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the 2014 street improvement project for Dunbar Excavating in the amount of $18,750, with additional funds coming from the water and sewer fund.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman, Stevens, Melama, Shippers, Mayor Felkins.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is with respect to the Michigan Department of Transportation State Trunk Line Maintenance Agreement. This is an agreement that, Bruce, we do how many years? Every year, or is it every couple?
Five years.
Every five years. This is with respect to work that the city does basically on behalf of the state of Michigan with respect to maintenance of our trunk lines. This is a standard agreement or contract that we've received from MDOT and have executed in the past. And our request this evening is for its authorization.
I'll make a motion to approve the five-year MDOT State Trunk Line Maintenance Contract as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens, Melama, Shippers, Spohman, Mayor Felkins.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I thought I lost my file here. Now it's your turn. Now, thank you. This next item is with respect to Monsey Street Soil Contamination. In the council communication, which I'm going to just kind of quickly go through, it talks about how in 2009 contaminated soil was excavated and removed by the gas station that was located at the northeast corner of Mitchell Street and Mossers Street. There still is some contamination that remains under Mossers Street since the excavation did not extend under that street. The, did I skip it?
It's okay, we'll just reverse it.
Goodness.
Keep going.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That is totally my fault.
We found you.
You found me?
We found you.
I just skipped.
Are you with us?
Yeah, we just, it's the next one.
Yeah, that's nice.
I apologize.
It's okay.
All right, you got lucky.
We just saved you five minutes.
Yeah, exactly. This was actually not an item under my report, I thought it was, so I apologize. If I may continue?
Yes.
Okay. The report that is included within your council packet advises that there's a two-foot vein of contamination that's located below the street that is not a risk to the human health or environmental health given its location. As a further aside, Bruce Stewart, the city engineer and public works director, and I did meet with Don and Brian from the DEQ, we talked about what all of this means and was advised that unless the city ever should essentially dig this street up, which we would do sometime, presumably in the future when we replace the utility infrastructure there, there's nothing happening immediately with regard to that. At that point in time, should the contamination still exist, we would then be faced with the question of, do we remove it or do we keep it there? There is no legal requirement to remove it. We may choose to remove it, given what is known of the amount of contamination, an amount of $7,000 would presumably more than cover any costs that we would have of taking that dirt out, and that is what you have before you this evening. The state of Michigan Department of Environmental, excuse me, Department of Environmental Quality has essentially developed a new mechanism thereby requiring the parties to get together in a proactive manner to talk about these issues so that there are no surprises down the road. This is really a good process that we went through. This provides the ability of knowing ahead of time what's going on so that essentially you arrive at a decision now that would thereby perhaps avoid litigation in the future. And so that's why this evening, what you have before you is a resolution that would grant the road right-of-way alternate institutional control form recommendation with respect to this and to accept the offer for the future cost of the remediation of the project. Does that sound right, Bruce?
And we're not forced to remove it. You could leave it there if you wanted to.
Right. Is there anything more that you wanted to add to this?
No, I think unless Don has.
So you're in Viral Solutions?
Yes, I'm in Viral Solutions. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you help facilitate all of this?
Yes, my name is Don Brady. I'm with a private company, Enviro Solutions. We're a cleanup company, so we work for the parties that are responsible for the cleanup, and we help them with cleanups. At this site, I don't know if you remember, but in 2009, we conducted a big excavation. We excavated most of the site and also into Mitchell because Mitchell was being redone at that time. But unfortunately, due to the roadways and the utilities, we aren't always able to excavate everything. And so that's why this is before you now.
There's, if you have a chance, or if you haven't had a chance, to take a look in the packet, there's a very detailed letter from Enviro Solutions. It talks about the total estimate of 100 cubic yards of soil. There are, basically, engineers drawing a plot of the area that shows approximately where it's located and the amount, pretty speaking. We did work with the city's attorney with the law for them putting together the resolution. And they have reviewed the information as well, and are in support of it, right?
I love this. I think it's great, the way that all the parties are coming together and the, it's kind of like polluter pays, I guess, you know? Owner that had the spells, actually putting money, and I hope we do remove it eventually when we get that street torn up for whatever reason.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented that grants the road right-of-way alternate institutional control form.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers, Spohman, Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Yeah, now we'll go back.
Now you're at Avon Automotive.
And you knew ahead of time that you were going to be the last item. You have skills.
That is funny. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council.
Did we make Ken wait for you?
Why, as you were going to walk through?
Just have two slides.
Do you want me to introduce you now?
Go ahead, you can do it. Go ahead, and then I can explain it. And Ken's here as well. He's a contractor, so.
And you can, you can fill in the blanks. Somewhat similar, at least on the surface, to what city council authorized quite a while ago with the board of Warner. This is a request before you this evening regarding a covering of their vestibule, of their entry. Avon Automotive is located off of 603 West Seventh Street here in Cadillac, Michigan. And as you can see in the image, they are looking at putting a covered vestibule in that are extended from the north wall of the office building outward, about 25 feet is what it says in the council communication. This is an encroachment into a right-of-way, and because of that, a revocable license to allow the encroachment is required for city council to consider and to approve. As what you've done in the past, and here's another slide that kind of shows from an aerial perspective where it is located. As council has considered and approved these in the past, there are several provisions that are provided within your packet. I believe there are seven in total that range from, you know, the license not being transferable without the express written consent of the city. It refers to how the license can be revoked at any time by the city for any reason, and the option of the city in our sort of discretion to revoke that license, that there's no cost that would be falling on the city if we do revoke the license. I'm not sure if there's any real specific questions, council, like, of on this. This is, again, very similar to what we've done in the past, but certainly, we're here to try to address anything that you might have.
I just want to shed a little light on that Avon Corporation, Avon Automotive Corporation has moved or has, is no longer on 13th Street, and they have now located within their facility. And they do a lot of international business, and this would be dressing up the facility. And it's an area that is not traveled much.
I do want to add one more thing. I believe we probably used as a, as a template, the Borg Warner license, and we do need to modify the date to 2014. But aside from that, I don't, I don't think there were any other holdovers that I came across.
And this is actually, isn't this part of the whole project that, where they went proactively and got that grant for the road?
The, well, the road project is separate but affiliated.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, grant for returning the road, won't be paying for the vestibule.
Right, right, but it's, it was really nice that what they did and was, they were proactive like that to get a grant. It's going to make that nice, so. Thanks for your patience again.
Okay, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to grant a revocable license to encroachment on the right-of-way for Avon Automotive.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers, Spohman, Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda, just for our reading pleasure and review, are the minutes of boards and commissions. And we have minutes from the downtown development authority, Wexford County Airport Authority, the Cadillac Planning Commission, and the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission for review. And at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor again for public comments. We do ask that you limit them to three minutes, and that you also please state your name and address and write it on the paper there for Sandy so we can be sure to get it into the minutes.
Good evening. My name is Richie Harris. I live at 124 and a half Air Street here in the city. I'm here to ask a few questions of the city council. Instead of forwarding information, I decided that I would come here and ask, you have a policy that you're allowing cafes on the city sidewalk. I really think that's a wonderful thing, you know, we're a tourist area, we need the business, but we seem to have one business here in town that infringes on the use of that. I have called the Liquor Control Commission, I have talked with the MDOT. I thought I would come to the city first before I... I thought I would come to the city first before I pursue that any further and maybe we could get this restaurant to pull his tables back up closer to his building and his fencing because I believe that that's still 131, or we call it Mitchell Street, is still part of the state highway access as a business loop. By him serving alcohol out there, he may be in violation of the law because there is an infringement. And if he would pull his tables back up, he may not be in that violation. I also worry about, you know, you get people kind of gathering down there and those tables get full. Granted, there is a little barrier there, but unlike the other two places, the brewery and Simply Delightful, who keep their tables up, doesn't seem to be an obstruction. And I've seen people that thank God the bump out is there because people in the wheelchairs have a real hard time kind of negotiating that area. If anybody should stop and want to chat there, becomes a complete obstruction on the city sidewalk. I'm just, I'm concerned under the Disabilities Act for some of those people because they are part of our community, they're shoppers, and I may be one of those people shortly. And I love to come downtown and kind of hang out on the benches and... So if maybe we could address that to that person, which is on the south side of Mitchell Street, and maybe he has to put his tables out there because he doesn't get any sunlight right-of-way and to attract those people. I don't know what the issue is, but if you could look into that, it would be wonderful. Because I'm not sure what your code is, but I felt when it was originally written that you had to keep your tables up to the building, not just out in the middle of the sidewalk. And then the other thing is, I don't always get here. And I was quite concerned in the good of the order when I heard councilmember Spelman bring up she's on her no smoking in the park kick again. Back in 2011, when we brought the Vietnam Wall to town, that was an issue. I was going to FOIA the minutes so we could dig that out because you were, the council was going to put a public and a council committee together to discuss where they, people thought that that should happen and shouldn't happen. And at that time, I was under the understanding that there were butt cans already purchased for the park areas, which I still haven't seen yet. On many occasion, I've shown a couple of the council members pocketfuls of cigarette butts because I am a smoker, unfortunately. But I try to do it away from people and I field dress them and then put them in my pocket. I won't throw them on the ground. So I have a concern about that, too, that there is supposed to have been a committee formed and that never did happen. So before we make, the council would take any action that way, I'd like to see that maybe put the interest out there for a committee to come and join in with the council people and see what we can do to rectify some of that. Would be wonderful. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Okay, if there's no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment for this evening and we'll move into good of the order. And this evening we'll start with councilmember Melama.
Since it's my age, I go first. All right. First of all, our issues and solutions over coffee was at Burkeys and I think we had probably about a dozen individuals there. So we had an excellent, excellent turnout. And we talked about a variety of subjects. And I also, to make myself more accountable, I think it was Mike, he's no longer here right now, he left, but he found me a form that was online. And I ran off copies because so many times issues are brought up and I have no way of knowing if they were followed through or, you know, sometimes I go off people's radar. So that went over very well. So we've got a form now and there is a form online. And several of the individuals knew that, but we had an excellent discussion and it was very, very good. And the second thing is, I want to thank Rec Boats for the dealer show. What a fantastic turnout, seeing the tour buses going up and down, heading out to Cherry Grove Convention Center. And of course, the weather didn't always cooperate, but also the number of boats out on the lake. And what a, what a great show for Cadillac. To have all those individuals, what a boost to the businesses, the motels. It was just great. And a real thumbs up to those people over there for bringing those people into our community and we were able to share all of our resources here with them. Excellent. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
If we're going by age, I'm not next.
You're next. I'm not telling you how we're going.
Actually, two things. First of all, and I know none of them are here yet, is the J.C.'s. That was a nice proclamation that was given for the J.C.'s, but it's an organization that does so much behind the scenes. And they do a lot that are supportive of events, so much behind the scenes and the volunteering hours is just amazing. So just that proclamation was really nice for them and wanted to thank them for that as well. And then I did want to bring up, we had, I wanted to check the date, but we, when we amended our budget, we did address the legal aspect. And at that time, as a council, I addressed the fact that we were over and we didn't make any appropriations for the legal. And I would encourage all of you to go back to that meeting and watch it because we all concurred that we should, that that won't happen again. And we kind of put that out to Marcus, that that happened, but not again. And it was the May 19th meeting. We then amended the budget for the legal to go to 285,000. And then it kind of stirred me when I read the article in the paper, but right after April, when we said we're not going to have this happen again, bring it to us afore, we then go about 35,000 over the budgeted amount. And I know I brought that up before. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I really think the council and it's, we just got to hold that accountable, that it puts us in a bad spot of not following the charter and the Uniform Budget Act and such. But I really think that that needs to be corrected again. Right after we had that discussion, it occurred again. And I know one of our goals has been to see how we can address that issue. And if that information's not coming to us, we can't. But I would really encourage all of you to go back and watch that meeting or that discussion where we all concur that that needs to happen. And then the very next quarter, we go over it again. And I want to be consistent because I know, you know, five years ago, I got some blame for having a personal vendetta on, when the charter issues. And we determined through a third party that we had nine things we were doing wrong. We corrected them. And this isn't bringing this up to bring up a problem as much as this needs to get solved. And it is our responsibility and I feel we can't as a board deal with it if we're not given that information. So I wanted to bring that up and ask that we all consider that. In addition, just, I went back, Ron Wolford wrote a book, I don't know what year ago, but we had talked about it at city council prior. He used to be at the Wexford County Road Commission on understanding local government. And if anybody wants to borrow it, or I would, I would buy these as a gift for all the council. It really addresses ironically a lot of the issues we're talking about, about transparency and open government in our roles that we have of serving the public. And I just happened to pick this up, it's a quick read, and was amazed again of reading it about how he addresses a lot of those issues. And other than that, we're kind of done.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, please.
I'd like to thank Bill Allen for his work on the Dog Park Committee as well as all of the other volunteers who have been working on that for a really long time. That's going to be really a nice asset to the community when that moves forward and we start to see completion on that project. I really have a bit of a heavy heart and I don't want to be negative here, but I keep reading my notes about quibbling, obstructing justice, FOIA appeals, lack of efficiency. I'm getting really frustrated with serving as a council member because unfortunately, I don't see us moving forward in the right direction. And we spend so much time quibbling and trying to put up barriers for us to really be productive. We have a planning retreat that, on this Friday, that's been scheduled for a long time and I think we all have it on our calendars. I hope we're all planning on attending. You know, obviously, we don't have to, but it would be helpful since we're having a facilitator to try to move us over, out of where we're at and to get us headed in the right direction so that we can start working together. We're never going to agree on everything, but if we can start to put some of our stuff aside that prevents us from moving forward in the right direction, I sure would appreciate it. I think a lot of the citizens would appreciate it. We've become a laughing stock. People talk about us all the time. People shake their heads. You won't even get anybody to run for these open seats when there's open seats because nobody wants to serve in this capacity. I have a few issues. I apologize. I'm just really frustrated. But there are a few things that have come to my attention this week that I feel like I need to put out there in addition to that. Jim Neff wrote in his column that was published in the Saturday edition of the Cadillac News. He usually talks a lot about what's going on in the state or in Flint or somewhere else in the nation with politics. And this week, he decided to focus on the city of Cadillac. And one of the things he talked about was the number of people that run red lights on Mitchell Street right downtown. Apparently, he has a regular walking path and so he's done his own little study and he's noticed how many people run the red light at the corner of Mitchell and Cass and at the corner of Mitchell and Pine. And he counted them and he thought, you know, this is really crazy. And it's not just people that are kind of like pushing down the accelerator to get through a yellow light, it's people that are just randomly running red lights. And I know that we've put up the, you know, the little speed signs, they're the speed indicator to try to slow traffic down. I know that we've watched those intersections, police them. But I think we probably need to continue to focus on this. I know resources are limited. In a discussion that I had with some folks in the community, one person said, well, it's a state trunk line. Why can't we ask the state police to help us monitor those intersections? And I thought, well, maybe we can. We should at least ask. And then in the same breath, we thought, well, why not the county? You know, we're always trying to get our 265,000 or however much that is from the road patrol mileage, you know, to bring some of that money into the city. Maybe the county can help us occasionally, but we do need to slow the traffic down on Mitchell Street. And we do need to prevent people from running those red lights because it's not very pedestrian safe. I consider myself really healthy and really active and I can't stand parking on Mitchell Street because I'm scared to death to open my car door. And, you know, I mean, I can open it and get really small and right line up to my car and I don't have to worry too much about, you know, I'm not slow is what I'm saying. And I'm afraid to park on Mitchell Street. And so what does that do to other people who, you know, might not be as confident or might not be able to move as fast as I can? MDOT continuously says that that street isn't any narrower than what it used to be. And yet, it doesn't seem to be very friendly for parking or for walking. And I don't think we've ever gotten together with a group of business owners and with the city and people in the community to do a review of the redesign of Mitchell Street. And I would love to see us ask MDOT if they would be willing to sit down and have that discussion because I frankly don't think it's working. Their job is to keep traffic flowing through there and they've done a fantastic job of that. I'd like to see those stoplights change so that people are stopping more frequently and they're not just driving straight through town. And they're backing up a little bit. And maybe they're, you know, looking around and seeing what stores are to the left and the right of them. And they're seeing that there are pedestrians. I'm going to roll, aren't I? Sorry. The other thing that is on my list is the bike path around Lake Cadillac. I understand we got a petition. I haven't seen it with some bikie enthusiasts who are concerned about the painting perhaps on it. And this was something that was also in the Jim Neff article and he pointed out some safety concerns about people trying to bike around Lake Cadillac. So I hope that we're paying attention to that and that we're working on that. I would be really interested in hearing an update on that. I've been asked several times about our road construction projects and when we're moving forward with Lake Street and that project. If we could have an update on that, that would be appreciated. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Marcus?
Sorry, just finishing one quick. I don't have any prepared comments for this evening other than the city clerk will be in touch with everybody looking at a special meeting date sometime within the next couple of weeks. I'll leave you there. Good time, we go.
Great, thank you.
Hope to see everyone on Friday.
Yes, absolutely. I also have several things that I would like to share this evening. The first thing is, the J.C.'s that were here this evening and we did the proclamation for, I actually had the privilege of attending their 60th anniversary celebration. There weren't a lot of people there, but they had brought a lot of history to that event. And it was a joy to stand there and look through, they've done a wonderful job of capturing pictures and documents. And it brought back so many memories of what that organization has done in this community. One of the concerns that I heard that evening was that, you know, people have forgotten what the J.C.'s do in this community. And I encouraged them and said that that absolutely could not be possible. But I also had the opportunity to visit that evening with the president, the Michigan president of the J.C.'s, and talked about the opportunity to bring them here to Cadillac for their fall conference in 2015. And it sounds like it's going to be a possibility. And I think that it's a wonderful opportunity for the J.C.'s to do something special and celebrate who they are in the community. And I just wanted to share that with you guys. So if there's anything that you hear or that we can help out with, hopefully, we can be instrumental in that. I also attended this week on Wednesday, had got to have lunch with the city staff out at Kenwood Park. And I wanted to say thank you to Marcus and his management team for providing that to the staff members. I don't know if you all realize that they do that, but it was a beautiful day, a little bit chilly, but it was a beautiful day and it was fun to chat with everybody. So, so thank you for doing that. This week, I also had the opportunity to meet with a few of the people from the industrial community. And there's a real concern out there that keeps coming up and it's blight, blight in our community. And not only, you know, I understand from Jerry that we have currently maybe 20 homes on the list of, you know, condemned homes that are sitting in the city. And the manufacturers are really concerned and so the discussion we had with the Dog Park this evening was really good. But the, you know, the manufacturers are concerned with what the, you know, industrial park is looking like. And so it's my hope that as we set out on projects within the community, that blight is at the top of... is at the top of one of those things and us managing some of those things to help the city staff out to get those things taken care of. And it's not going to happen overnight, but every day is a new day and I think every opportunity, we have to make a difference there, is going to be important. Also had the opportunity to collaborate with the YMCA, the city staff, and Cadillac Area Public Schools in putting together a grant, a $50,000 grant opportunity to enhance, expand our after-school meal program. And they came to us with like, what, 10 days? Yeah, oh, by the way, we had this opportunity and Jerry and Marcus and I apologize if there was somebody else that was involved, but they put this beautiful package together and we got it out the day ahead of time, correct? So, keep your fingers crossed for the community because we've got some really neat ideas for a summer program out at, actually, our Kenwood Beach area, which would enhance our beach area too in the summer. Interlock and Public Radio ran a story on Friday. If you didn't see it, you can go out to their website and see it, but they ran a story on the bike Cadillac program. Gal from there called and interviewed me and they thought that that was just a terrific concept and it's a concept she hadn't heard before, so she wanted to run a story about it. So if you get out to their website, take a look at that, it was a, it was a neat article. And then I, who mentioned roads? Sherry mentioned the roads. Either in our last council meeting or the one before that, I had asked if we could have, if we could publish, Marcus, a schedule of when the roads are tentatively going to be repaired. Several community members have asked for that document to be put somewhere so they could at least have an idea when things are scheduled to happen.
And I do recall, councilmember Spelman, when you mentioned that, just that we, we don't have a schedule published or made yet, but we do have online and we'll pull it out with respect to our CIP and then we'll try to come up with some, some timeframe so that people have a general idea.
Okay, that would be great because we don't want them to have to go looking for it and if you can just come up with a summary schedule that is, it's easy for them to review, that's, that'd be great. And then Sherry also talked about our opportunity to come together on Friday to start looking forward. And I really hope that we all attend on Friday. I think that it's important for the health of this team moving forward and I believe that we'll come away from that with a new perspective. And we need a new perspective as a team, not as individuals. And we've got a great facilitator, you won't, you won't know it until you get to meet her, but I promise that when you walk away from there, you're going to be glad you did. And, you know, it's not a mandatory, mandatory attendance, but we can't make a difference for the whole unless we're whole in our attendance at that event, so. I do have some concerns and, and I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer either. I haven't really spoken out publicly a lot about the difficulties that, that we're having, but I feel much the same as councilmember Spelman. It is absolutely my desire, and I think it is of all of us, to, to serve in the capacity that we've been elected to serve. We have precious time together to get the business of Cadillac taken care of. I really prefer to be able to spend our time here productively and in moving the city forward. I absolutely agree when someone has a concern that we need to talk about it, but I think that there might be a better format sometimes for how we talk about it and it isn't necessarily in this great, you know, this great big room because that's how we solve things, is by talking. But one thing that I would ask of all of you is that if there are going to be concerns or a concern brought up in these council chambers, when you bring that concern, I would hope that we are all articulating our thoughts, we're being concise in how we present it, and we're also offering solutions so that we have a starting point. I appreciate each and every one of you and I appreciate the time that you give and the conversations that I have with you, but we've got to start looking forward and stop looking back and trying to place blame on somebody or something. With that being said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.